Hey, and we have Margaret and Kathy here.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we have to approve minutes. Did everybody get a chance to look at all the minutes?
Yep.
Yeah. I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Anne seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Okay, Ms. Marcy.
All right, skipping signing because you're not here to sign.
Yep.
At some point, I will drop off Lawrence and Carol first who decide. At some point, I should kind of give you guys a, like what I've been spending money on. One of the things was, this happens every year, we brought in money by, for the end of June, and invariably, we get bills that come after July 1st. And so, we can't use July 1st money to pay the bills that are dated for June on them. So, and usually what happens is we have fines and fees money, gift accounts, state aid. This year, because we've been closed since March, we haven't collected any fines or fees. We haven't met with the friends to ask them for money. And we kind of flew through a lot of our state aid because we were short that $10,000 from our expense line. So Sue and I sat down and we used some trust fund money to pay some of those outstanding bills from last fiscal year.
A lot of the little ones, you know, that had just small amounts left in them, we sort of all put them together and paid what we could.
Right, and we used a lot of the interest on the ones that we can't spend down, just the interest amounts. So, there's still, like, we didn't, we didn't touch Bruno, and there's another one that has a couple hundred thousand dollars in it, we didn't touch that.
Yep.
So, we're still okay with the trust funds, but it was, it was about a thousand dollars that we ended up using. Just so you guys are aware of what's going on.
Yeah, Marcy, hopefully in September, we can meet in person, and maybe you can do a spreadsheet and let everybody know what's out there and what's left. Okay, that's good, thank you.
You're welcome. Usually, I get quarterly, a trust fund.
Right.
Amount, so as soon as we get, as soon as I get another one of those, I'll send that over to you guys.
Perfect, that'd be great, thank you.
I want to recap town meeting in case any of you weren't there. It went really well. No one questioned any of our lines. It was very hot.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And this, I think everyone was just really worried about the school situation, so that was the problem for most of it. But, so once they finished debating about the school, everything else sailed through.
It did, it did.
Yeah, our article two went through without question. They didn't question a lot of articles two.
Only two.
Yeah, which was really good. They did, and then, because Article Two was kind of put together after the, before, the union raises were pulled out in a separate article, I think it was Article Thirty, and that also went through okay, so.
Except for the fact that it melted, it was fine.
Yes, sitting in that hot sun, but it was worth it.
It was.
We did, went well, we got an increase to the expense line. It's still not back where it was, but it was a decent expense line. Looking forward for next year, we are gonna have to push again for that expense line to get back to where it was. We need another $20,000 in that line so that we can really investigate fines and fees in a real way. It's gonna be horrible as soon as I have people back in the building, and I'm having quarantine items for 10 days, and then having to charge them fines, like, it's just.
Oh.
It's not, it's not gonna work.
No, it's not gonna be pretty.
I'm thinking what we're gonna do for our, all the materials is doing a grace period for 10 days.
Yeah.
Because right now, we're just checking things in fine free, because there aren't people coming into the building. And sometimes, we're doing printouts for people, but we're not doing faxing and copying, because we're not having them drop off their stuff. So if anyone needs anything printed, they'll email it to us, and we put it outside on the curbside table. And that's working really well, but we're not charging them for it. And it's not, it's not mass volumes like it used to be, and we're not printing out flyers. So it's definitely the amount of printing that we're doing. We should see that from our service contract, from the copier and printer go down a little bit, but we're still gonna have that bill at some point, and it's still, we're not gonna be able to recoup that cost. So these are, we are getting, when people pay fines online, we are getting a check every month from OCLM. So that's good, but it's a third of what people were paying.
Right.
Right.
Do you think it's worth it to email or talk to the health agent again, and maybe we can back up our quarantine to five days even?
So they just released a new study that they're seeing the virus on DVDs and the plastic bags, up to five days and some even longer than that.
Okay.
So I think, I think we need, we could probably talk to the health agent and Frank and be like, here's all the studies.
Yeah.
Regular books, it's 24 hours.
Okay.
Board books and magazines, it's, it's three days.
Okay.
DVDs and anything with a plastic case is five days. What, what do you have, what would you want us to do? So we could, I could do that. Or, I think for staff, they're, they're comfortable with the 10 days, and it's a good flow. Like, until there's patrons coming in the building, we're not gonna charge people fines.
Anyway, right.
Anyways, we're gonna still just do a fine free check-in. I mean, we could do a book drop check-in back to the day that they return things.
Yeah, absolutely.
We label the piles, so we know what's going on.
Yep.
Is it based on, is it based then on when they actually return it as to what they would be fined? Is that what you're saying? Yes. Okay, so they're not being charged for the 10 days it's being held?
No.
No.
Okay.
So they're, going already into this fiscal year, we are seeing an issue because of Corona and COVID of fines.
Sure.
Of recouping that cost, and it's just, and we, we know that's not a guaranteed revenue stream. And we've been pushing the finance department year after year, especially since I've started, that we, we can't rely on this money.
Right, and this year is a perfect example.
Right, and another thing we really have to think about when we go meet with the finance committee at the end of this year is we don't have a dedicated custodian.
Right.
And this is a problem, and when we are open to the public, how is that gonna work? Like, are staff gonna wipe down, like, staff are really good about wiping down the shared computers at the end of the night. They, they pick their computers that they use, but I don't expect one person to sit there for eight hours while we're open. Like, we're gonna, like, I'm constantly gonna switch out staff while we're open. And so, someone's gonna have to go through and wipe, like, and I, you know, I, I, there's a level that staff will wipe down the computer after they leave, but there is also, once we have people using the computers, like, we can ask the patrons to wipe the computers down. And Frank says they don't have, we don't have to have open bathrooms because we're not serving food, but there's still gonna be high-touch areas, like the doorknobs and the plexiglass.
Right.
That are gonna have to be wiped down periodically throughout the day, and at the beginning and the end of the day.
Right, right. So having a dedicated custodian would make a big difference.
Right.
Yeah.
And it would be nice if it was, like, even someone part-time that comes in the morning, so that you're starting out clean.
Yes.
Or staff comes in. So that, that may be a line that we have to really think about.
Yep.
So we don't have a night custodians anymore?
No, so we used to have a, the town used to hire a cleaning company, and then, they had a really good cleaning company, but it was dependent on how good the cleaners were. And then, you know, it's, it's a state contract bid thing, and then they got a new cleaning company, and that one was awful. And they always have a hard time because they're hiring undocumented, not necessarily undocumented, but they're hiring people that aren't the best. And you, in order to clean the town buildings, they have to do background checks, and they have to pass the drug test. And so a lot of these cleaning companies are, don't always hire people that can pass a police quarry check to clean a police building.
So who's cleaning the library now?
So one of the, so the town hall custodian will go in and periodically spray things down with a mister that has an antiviral antibacterial spray, and he empties the trash and will clean the bathroom. But it's only when he has time.
Okay.
And it's not done, like, to the level that it should be done.
And he's responsible for other buildings too, town hall, police station.
Right, the police station, council on aging, the fire department does their own, so.
Maybe we should hire somebody else. Maybe they should put somebody else in the budget.
Right, and it's so, one of the, when we cut the 10,000 out of the expense line, the town cut the $40,000 that they're paying the cleaning company. And I think, while that, you know, and all the town departments were like, yeah, we'll just clean our own buildings, and like, so.
But that's just not feasible.
It's not feasible, and especially considering, like, if we're gonna go to the finance committee this year and say, we need a dedicated custodian, part-time, we need to pay them $16 an hour, and this is what it, like, this is how many hours, this is a prime time to be like, yes, we need this money, and the finance committee should be like, of course you need this money.
Yeah. I would agree. I think that's a huge, huge priority.
I absolutely do as well.
For sure.
I, I think that's something we really need to investigate, and.
I would agree.
Going forward, we've been pushing.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Michael.
I was gonna say, I'm assuming that every library in the area has somebody that does the cleaning for them, so, I mean.
Right.
You can make that case, you know?
Yes, we can, for sure, because we can do a survey, but Abington has a retired police, Boston police officer, and he does that, and he comes in every, every day during the week, not on weekends, but every five days a week to clean the library.
It's do this sooner than later.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Especially if we're gonna open.
Right.
When we open, you have to have some being there cleaning every single day, if, at the minimum.
Right.
Are they saying, Mark, when they're gonna open the building?
No, so Frank and I have been going back and forth. Initially, when we met with him in May to do curbside, he said after Labor Day, right? That's what he was kind of pushing towards.
Yeah.
I talked to him af, the week after town meeting, and I, and he was like, how's everything going? I'm like, staff is doing good, we're doing a great job on curbside, it's going really well. I mean, we've had, I want to say between seven and eight hundred pickup appointments, like, it's well utilized. He's like, good.
It's been great, because I picked up my books.
Right, and I mean, I think there's, yeah, there are a few people that want to browse and come in, and the lack of computer use, I do understand, but I think we're providing what we can provide right now, and especially not having a cleaner. We haven't, they haven't finished putting the cur, enough of the plexiglass up. I bought some plexiglass because I didn't trust the town to provide it. We can use the CARES Fund to get reimbursed for it, so that it's not coming out of our budget. And so I got three pieces, one, because we moved the reference desk back out onto the floor, and the two sides of the lower circ desk, because they just put it on the top of the higher part of the circ desk, and they put it on Stephanie's desk, so. Plexiglass is coming. I ordered a bunch of those stickers that say, like, stay six feet apart. So those, those are coming, so I don't think, we, we can't open until those things come in. And I think Frank, right now, he's worried that things are gonna get shut back down again.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think he wants to see how the schools play out.
Yeah.
For a little bit.
Marcy, you and I haven't talked about that. I think they need to give the schools a month and see how things go, and then go from there.
Right, and most of my directors that are open, I'd say about half the network is open, are doing it under the impression that it's gonna shut down again.
It's discouraging.
It is, it is discouraging.
And so, and I think staff are really nervous. My, I, we're not sending Ellie to school, we're doing remote learning, but Sharon is. I think staff is really concerned about having Sharon come back into the building when her kids are getting that level of exposure, but we can't, there's nothing I can do about that. I, as a boss, will work with Sharon around her schedules so that she can be home when her kids need to be remote. I am also gonna have to take Tuesdays and work from home. Staff knows that I can be, like, I'm available text, email, phone, that that shouldn't be a problem, and there's plenty I can do from home. And I've, you know, I've talked to Sharon about that too, like, she can, we can figure this out as employees, but I can't, I can't tell Sharon that for 15 hours she can work from home until, that's not, her, her job is, she needs to be in the building.
Right, right.
Like, there's some things she can do from home. She does a lot of our finance, keeping track of our spending, that she can do a spreadsheet at home, but it's not 15 hours a week. She needs, she needs to be in the building, answering the phones, setting up the curbside.
Right.
Putting books away, that's her job. Where unfortunately, I have a lot more things that I can do from home.
Right.
And it's one day a week, it's not, it's not bad.
No. It's gonna be a lot of finagling and a lot of adjusting for everybody.
Right, and I think we need to be respectful of that, and, you know, I've talked to staff about, the town has assured me, we have excellent circulation through the air. It is, it's a large building, they're far apart. They're, right now, they're taking a lot of time not being in the building, like, they're using vacation personal and sick leave as needed, and it's fine until we're open to the public, and then there is a level of staffing that needs to happen. We're talking about, I think especially in the fall, for Labor Day, doing like maybe one or two nights a week, probably till 7:15, to allow the, you know, the people back to work and back to school to pick up the books. So we're really gonna, we're gonna look at that and see what days work best for staff, because I, I can't, we can be flexible about this right now. So, it's good, and that's kind of where we're at about reopening the library. It's unfortunate, like, I wish, like, we all knew, like, yes, November 15th, this virus is gonna be gone, we're all set, we're gonna be open. But I think, I think Frank is either being overtly cautious, or he's waiting till he retires and someone else can make that decision.
I think a little of both, but anyway.
Right. A couple of things have happened. The blood drive for Children's Hospital, people approached me about doing a blood drive in September, September 12th, they plan on having 25% of what they usually have.
Okay.
They'd, they'd have access to the parking lot and the bathrooms for the staff, not people donating blood. We, we have just one bathroom, it could be theirs, we could open it, and then, like, at the end of the day, shut it down, and, like, the staff aren't using that bathroom. We're not gonna be open to the public again, even if Frank says, even if Frank calls me tomorrow and says, Tuesday after Labor Day, let's, let's be open, I don't imagine we're gonna be, we're gonna open Saturdays in September.
No, I wouldn't think so, Marcy. I think that's gonna take a while.
Right, so I think, I think we could do this. I know they're really struggling with blood. Obviously, I'm not gonna tell Annie that, yes, we can do it, and I will want to talk to the Board of Health, but I feel like it's something that you guys should be aware of. If you guys think this isn't something that is a good idea, I can tell Annie tomorrow, it's just not gonna fly, and we're really sorry. I know this is a need right now, but there is a, there is a risk.
There is. What do you think, ladies and gentlemen?
I think if they have a blood drive, that it's probably the safest group to have in there.
Yeah, and they're gonna be outside.
I would think all the precautions would be taken.
Right, they're gonna be all outside, it's just staff needs to access the bathroom. We can roll out a table for them to have, they used to do the sign-ups in the community room. I wouldn't allow that, because that's where we're quarantining everything.
Right.
I can roll out one of our tables for them, and they can sit outside.
Okay.
I think as long as you clear it with the Board of Health, and the Fire Chief, or whoever you have to spare it with, that would be great.
Absolutely, I would agree. Are you okay with it too, Anne?
I think, I can, I agree with both, everything that's said.
Okay.
I think it would be okay.
Okay, I would, I would too, Marcy, if you just check with all the, the appropriate groups, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a sign of hope.
Right, like, we're getting there.
A sign of hope. We're very liable, Marcy, is, is that, when you agree to have a blood mobile.
Yeah.
Is the liability on the organization that's doing it, or are you just giving them permission to operate, or how does that work?
It's mostly, we're giving permission to operate. The blood mobile is in the parking lot. We've done this now three or four times. They really appreciate it, they usually do really well. I like that they're considering, they're only doing 25 donors, like, they.
Are people signing up for it?
People are signing up, there's not gonna take Watkins.
Okay.
They have, they are doing this really safely. This did give me a lot of pause, and usually when Annie writes to me and says, we're gonna do this, I'm like, yep, that date works great. I'll have staff there in the morning to make sure that, to let you in, and that's that, it's great, all set, and, but this time, I was like, I have a trustees meeting on this date, I'll add you to the agenda, we'll talk about it. It's the best I can do right now. I know you probably need Children's Hospital to know that this date works or not, but right now, I, I can't give you a firm yes. Usually, it's no problem.
Right, that's right, usually.
Usually, we book these out, like, she does one in March, and she does one in, in September. She, I want to say the last one she did was that last Saturday we were open. So.
As long as the Board of Health is okay with it, I think, I think everything else should be all right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. There's also, we did Greg Maychuk does a pastel thing. He was supposed to come in June, obviously, I put him off till September. I, other than, I think, that's again, I think I'm gonna have to call the Board of Health, we could maybe set up tables outside, and everyone gets their own table. Usually, he does 30 participants, I, I think it would have to be like 15, maybe 10 or something. Like, we can, we can set how many people. That one, I'm a little less okay with. We may have to end up cutting him a check, because usually, part of his payment is covered by the cultural council.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Well, if you don't feel comfortable with it, don't do it. I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, I just, I feel bad, because it's a, it's always, he always books it, like, I can always get 30 people to come in and draw. And it's an adult program, we don't offer a lot for adults, but I just.
If you're not, if you're not comfortable, then, you know, you make that decision.
So I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow and see where we're at.
Yeah, and talk to the Board of Health.
Yeah, and talk to the Board of Health, maybe they're more comfortable than I am.
Well, if people were sitting, I mean, just to throw in another viewpoint, if people were sitting separately at tables, you know, spaced apart, and he has whatever you, pastels that they're gonna be using, separated, like, in a bag or whatever, you know, something that's predetermined, and there's not a lot of people handling things, because I've gone, I've gone just, just one of them, and I, I thought it was fabulous. But I, it would seem to me as though you might be able to do something, or perhaps even not have as many colors that would be included in whatever the image is gonna be, you know, along those lines, so that there are thoughtful precautions that are being made.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'll write them, and I'll talk to the Board of Health and see where they're at, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was approached by a company, I've talked about this a little bit, about buying tablets that are similar to our hotspots, so they have built-in data. It's, it's a great idea, it would end up being, we pay one time a $20 fee, and then it's $33 a month for the unlimited data plan per tablet. It's a great idea. Our hotspots have been going out constantly. I mean, they've been going out constantly regardless, but they're, they're still going out constantly.
Right.
Especially with people not being able to come in to use our internet. I think it's a great idea, but I, I'm not sure about spending that money right now, is kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe we want to hold off on that and just plan on spending money on books and things.
Yeah.
It, it is a good idea, but.
Yes. On the other note, I talked to Sue about this. When we shut down, and Stephanie and I, and all the staff were doing work from home on one classroom or another, every, all the staff was using their own personal computers, which is great and wonderful, but I think we need to investigate buying laptops for the staff, especially for myself, the Assistant Director, and Stephanie, and maybe, like, one to share initially before we start getting, like, a dedicated laptop for everyone. Something that they will have workflows on it, so that they can, like, renew books for patrons when they call or email. So it's something I think we need to think about, and either we need to buy the four that we need this year, either out of trust funds, or state aid when we get it, or going forward, we need to, again, with like the custodian line, we need maybe a dedicated technology line that we need to think about putting in there, that.
Marcy, can any of that come out of that new COVID expense, the laptop?
Yeah, I think we could, like, I could talk to Frank about, like, see what kind of money is still in the CARES line once we get the plexiglass in, and I submit that bill. The, the town did agree to pay for Zoom for the library account, so that's going through this hopefully in a couple of weeks. And again, it's just, like, it's constant, like, hey, this is brand new, and now we, now we really need this. The only laptop that we have in the library for staff to bring home and take home has been there, I think, pre-Andrea, so.
So it's old.
It's old.
Yeah, it would be nice if we can get the money from the COVID funds.
Right, absolutely.
I don't know if we need to wait to see what other expenses we have before we do that.
Right.
Before we buy four anyway. If you have one now, and it needs to be replaced.
Right.
I could see doing that right now.
Yeah.
Hold off on the other three until we know where we're going?
Yeah, and on the Assistant Director, I did post the. Yeah, and on, um, the Assistant Director, I did post the job. I have 19 applicants.
Wow.
Wow, good.
So a couple of really good ones that are semi-local, someone that lives in East Bridgewater, so that's great local. Um, a couple of other ones that are in Massachusetts. There's a, some qualified good candidates in the greater New England area. So I'm really excited to start looking through those.
Who left, Marcy?
Uh, Tyler left.
Oh, okay, didn't realize he did.
Yeah, he left the end of February, so. So I had initially posted that job in March, but of course then we couldn't do any interviewing. So as soon as that line got funded at town meeting with, and it got funded with a 2% raise, I posted the job, so. There are a lot of people unemployed right now.
Yeah, yeah. And when did you put in the cutoff?
Um, September 15.
Okay.
So that's, that's the scary part too. You don't want someone just taking the job for a month or two and then you'll be back in the same situation.
Exactly.
That's something you'll figure out when you interview.
Right, exactly. And I, like, there's a lot of, I'm see, like some of the less qualified candidates are definitely, I can tell from their cover letter and their jobs, like they're mad because of how their company dealt with COVID and they're done.
Yeah.
Which is fine and we can woo them and they'll love it, but.
Can I ask a question? It, it's not related to the hiring, but I was, you were just saying how Tyler's position has been unfilled. Um, at the end of the year, is there, if you needed money for expenses, is there a way to do a line item transfer from unspent monies under the Assistant Director line towards expenses?
I know I can move money in between salaries rather easily. Like so, um, if, um, the line that Nick and Sharon and Ellie get paid out of, I, sometimes I run short on that line.
Yep. No, I remember that. I didn't know if you could do it to expenses. I'm not sure. But I think in the last two months, you might be able to.
Right, in the last two months, I can definitely, like if I run out of, like I get a big electric bill.
Yep.
Something like that, so I think I, I can, I, but I have to meet with the finance committee and the selectmen, I think.
Yep.
So we are gonna be short on that line because we were shut last year and turned money back. We were short, I think, the previous year and turned money back. So I think if we do have to go to finance committee and say, we need more money for X, Y, and Z because we have these extra expenses, they should be willing to give us that money because we have turned money back.
Yes, I would, I would agree. I would agree. Awesome.
Excellent, thank you.
That's good.
Okay, so that's pretty much all I have.
Does anybody have any questions, any comments, anything they'd like to say?
I think you're doing a wonderful job. I'm still enjoying all my books and using the Libby.
Oh, good, good.
So.
Thank you. Excellent.
Yeah, it, it really is such a, it's so much easier to use than the other method that we were using.
Yes, absolutely, Margaret.
Yeah.
That's for sure it is.
It has improved greatly since the early 2000s.
Have you seen an increase in the number of people who are borrowing electronically during this time?
Absolutely. Our March was outrageous and it's only, it's gone up. And we've investigated how to spend money better through there because the, the bills, buying electronic books is way more expensive than buying crankbooks. Um, so we, we've done a lot of work, Stephanie and I, with how we were buying materials for that to fill out that collection, so. We've sat on a lot of webinars.
I have noticed a lot of the new releases are on the Libby now and you can get them pretty quickly.
Yeah, and it, they're on top of how much money we spent at, between March, April, and May on, on Libby. We, um, a lot of libraries that weren't sharing their books previous started sharing. So you, you are, you should see that you're getting books quicker.
Yeah, it's been great.
All right.
I do have one, one more question if I could ask.
Go ahead.
Since we have two people that are interested in serving on the Board of Library Trustees, have they talked about what the process is gonna be, oh, the timeline for the process, Marcy? Frank?
Frank said that, um, we need to meet with the selectmen and I think,
Yep.
I think their next meeting is sometime in September.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
I, I think it's just Sue and I have to hang out.
Yeah.
I don't think the rest of you have to go.
No.
And is there an application process that you're looking for? I mean, that's the part that I was unclear about, Marcy. Do I submit a formal letter if I'm interested or what goes on?
I think Town Hall has a volunteer application.
Yes, it's, it's on the town website. You'll go under how do I apply for and one of them is Boards or Committees.
Oh, all right. Oh, okay.
You download that and then fill it in. And now we just have them passing them along to the Board of Selectmen.
I see, okay.
All righty. Everybody else okay?
Very happy to see two nice candidates willing to step up.
Well, they're inviting us.
Welcome to the Sophisticated Employees Club.
Yeah.
Otherwise known as SAP.
Yeah. Yes, we're really, a really cool bunch, as you can tell. All righty, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all righty. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Stay safe.
Yep, have a good rest of the summer. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.